Although they have been approved as well. And January sixth minutes, our, the meeting was for the reorganization of the township. Historically, this was the only activity that was on the agenda. But for some reason, Jennifer Savage, our finance director, decided it would be wise to put dispersments on there. Probably because of her inexperience and probably because of lack of communications in, in the office. If you look at any of the other previous historical reorg meetings, you won't see dispersments anywhere. Anyway, this caused, this caught the supervisors off balance because they didn't advertise that dispersments would be discussed and voted on when they advertised this meeting. So you and I, if we had known that, we might have attended because they were going to approve spending. Instead of just doing a re, typical reorganization. So she put it on and she was very vocal about getting this, this spending approved. The board was going to table it since it had not been advertised. And what Jennifer Savage told the board was the consequences of not approving these, uh, the spending would be that tomorrow, the very next day, they would repossess, uh, the Mack truck and, uh, the next day, okay? So, uh, this was patently false, of course. You know, if you've ever missed a payment on a, on a vehicle or anything else, they don't repossess the next day. They send you a letter, it's drawn out, it takes a couple of weeks maybe. And then one day you wake up and find out your vehicle's towed. But the next day, it never happens. So the other controversy that this caused was that, uh, in the minutes that they wrote up, they claimed that Jennifer said she warned the supervisors that there may be future liabilities. And I objected to that as well as the three new supervisors because that's not what she said. And you can see the video for January sixth and you'll see where she tells them that if you don't allow this to be paid, it will be repossessed tomorrow. And that's what we wanted the minutes to say. So they argue, uh, the staff does, you know, township, uh, the temporary township manager argues that, well, we don't have to write the minutes verbatim. And that's true. We don't expect that. In fact, in my forty years, I know how minutes should be taken. So this, this young whipper snapper township manager is trying to educate me on minutes. But what the minutes do have to do is provide you with the enough information to, to understand what they're talking about. And so, uh, saying in the minutes that it's, uh, potential future liabilities is, uh, a pretty obtuse. Especially when the, the video shows us that she said specifically, they will repossess the Mack truck tomorrow. So there's a lot of funny stuff going on here. Uh, I'm not complaining about these things. I just want to present them to you so you start getting a picture of how disorganized and corrupt the township still is. And the three supervisors are going to have difficulty, uh, getting their hands around this because it's so deeply ingrained over the past four or five years. And a lot of it has to do with the office staff. As long as they're still there, we're still going to have this problem, I expect. So that's what I wanted to talk about on the January sixth meeting. And, uh, so then we'll go, uh, forward to, to the meeting that we're actually going to watch in a few minutes. And this meeting, there wasn't a lot going on. There was a few issues, but, uh, not much extra to see. But they did approve all the previous minutes which had been tabled because of all these mistakes in writing the minutes. And what they're doing is they're, they're softening issues in the minutes. In some cases where it doesn't even come close to representing what was said in the videos. If there's anything that might, uh, suggest that they didn't do something right, either the supervisors or the staff, it's, it's left out, our comments in the minutes are vague. So they're manipulating the minutes. And I am, uh, keeping a record of each of these issues so that I can present them to, uh, legal authorities, uh, to prove my, my statement that there's manipulation and suppression of the public voice. For example, on the January thirteenth minutes that they approved, uh, there's important information concerning the investigation that's going on in the township now. So they'll put out, and you'll see it in the minutes unless they've corrected them because I haven't seen the corrected ones yet. They haven't been, they've been approved but not posted. Where they say that the township's being investigated and we have a former supervisor who is requesting an attorney. But they leave out who's investigating us. So two months, two years from now, if you read these minutes, you're going to scratch your head and say, well, who's investigating us? Yet if you look at the video, which can only be seen at exeterunited.com because the township decided in their infinite wisdom not to videotape it. But you can see it at exeterunited.com and you will see where the solicitor says that the district attorney's office is investigating Exeter Township. So this is information that they left out. Now, am I asking them to do it verbatim? Certainly not. But I am asking them to identify who is investigating us. But what I've heard at the, at this February tenth meeting, they have approved the minutes without that correction. So we're never going to know unless you do dig deep in research to find out who's investigating us. And then in January twenty-seventh minutes, there's a couple of things that aren't right. But the significant one really is, uh, where Jennifer Savage puts on this presentation and then the claims in the, in the minutes that this presentation is going to be attached to the minutes. Well, it's not there. It's missing. So they've approved all these minutes, uh, and whether the corrections are made or not, I can't really tell you. I think they did not make the corrections. In fact, they came back in the agenda package. We read the, uh, corrected minutes and there were no corrections at all. So the staff doesn't listen or follow the direction of the supervisors. They pretty much do what they want to do. And then the supervisors on February tenth, I, I don't know, maybe they just gave up. They just said, okay, we'll just approve them anyway. But the biggest person, the person who drives this the most on the board is John Casadis. You'll see in a couple of situations where he's immediately trying to get, um, a second to his motion to approve the minutes before anyone could discuss if there's any issues with that. He does this often and he, uh, is starting to get stalled on that because they stopped him, uh, in, on several occasions. So keep an eye on that guy. Excuse me. He's not to be trusted, certainly. Uh, another item that I wanted to talk about from this is, uh, if the third time in three meetings, uh, Jennifer Savage has indicated that the 2020 budget has a three point eight million dollar surplus. So, you know, my claim is much different. I'm saying there's a deficit. And, uh, I have a lot more experience than Jennifer Savage has in this area. And I took the budget that they released and analyzed it. Had a few other people over here, CPA and a professor, accounting professor from Albright, uh, who seems to agree with me. But for now, let's just talk about what Jennifer has done. So in three meetings, she's indicated, uh, very clearly it's a three point eight million dollar surplus. So I put in a right to know request to get the detail, the background supporting this contention. Well, when they sent me the information recently, guess what? They now claim it's a three point two million dollar surplus. So we've lost, you know, six hundred thousand dollars somewhere. But more importantly, it's the exact same budget that I did my analysis on. So I offered, you'll see it in the meeting, I offered the supervisors an opportunity to allow me to present to them what I see and what I know. Uh, in, either individually or collectively at, at the township building. No one has taken me up on that offer. So you could see that they clearly are not interested in knowing what the budget numbers are. Uh, so I think they're not sure if it's a surplus or a deficit, as I say it is. And they certainly do not know what the number is. Uh, so think about that. These are our supervisors who have, through the Second Class Township Act, have response, fiscal responsibility for our community. And they don't know. It goes deeper than that. I could spend twenty minutes talking about what I know about how they basically ignored their responsibilities here. So I'm going to keep on this until we get an answer. You know, it's very much like the, uh, the podium that's missing, which we're not finished with. I'm getting so many different stories about what happened to our podium that used to be in the meeting for probably decades, all of a sudden disappear. And the only one who's talking a little bit is Mr. Speaks and his, uh, story is convoluted at this time. But we're going to have more information on that later. So another thing in this meeting I brought up is, uh, you won't believe it, that we, we had a forensic audit of the Running Country Club, which is big news these days, right? And the auditor discovered that all the books and records for the, that food and beverage business, the golf course, and I think the, the improvements, the, the financial records are all gone. So how does the board react when they find this out in the forensic report? Uh, they do nothing. So did they not read the report? Did they not understand that there's a, a situation here? A fiscal responsibility that they have to take care of our assets and our money? So now the books are missing and I asked them in the meeting, have they, did they ever open up an investigation? And they looked dumbfounded. Now Dave Spees and John Casadis were on the board when this forensic audit was performed. Now I expect a lot more from Mr. Spees. He's an intelligent man. He's experienced. I don't expect very much from Mr. Casadis. He's a forty-three year, actually, he's a seven-year-old in a forty-three-year-old body, okay? Uh, he wouldn't, uh, take the action to, uh, protect us if, if his life depended on it. So what's going on with the missing records? Tell us if there is, uh, going to be an investigation. I need to know that before I report these things to the state. Then, you know, we had some things going on. Uh, I did a little calculation on our legal expenses, which everyone should know by now are out of this, out of this world. So just for September, October and November of two thousand and nineteen, we paid Fox and Rothschild, we have several lawyers, but we paid Fox and Rothschild four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, over that amount. Plus the four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in legal fees. We must be the most, uh, uh, lit, lit, litigated, uh, community in Berks County. It's, it's outrageous. And you have to ask yourself, when is it going to stop? Finally, I want to talk about the short-term, uh, the short-term rental ordinance they're trying to pass. This is something that they tabled at this meeting and it never, no, we never get anything accomplished. But first of all, the ordinance is bizarre. I, I had chances to stand up and maybe comment on it, but I thought it would be futile. They never listen to you anyway in, on that board. But the problem is it's so complex, the way that Fox and Rothschild has written it. Uh, it doesn't include any, uh, ways to enforce it, what the enforcement is going to be, penalties and so forth, permits needed. But I've seen other short-term rental ordinances that are much simpler, easier to understand. So what they've done is they created a document that will be a field of diamonds for the attorneys because we'll end up in lawsuits left and right where, you know, these business people will just, uh, file lawsuits against us. While that was tabled after some people complained. Excuse me. So, you know, the problem that we have with our township, it's been this way last year during, uh, John Casadis's regime. Uh, it was this way when Vander Lane was in charge for three or four years. And hopefully it'll change under the regime of David Spees, but that remains to be seen. And what I'm talking about is we get very little accomplished here. Anyone who's following the politics and the decisions that the board has made in the past several years should know, think about what we've done. They've sold our wastewater treatment plant. They shut down the Running Country Club, which at one time combined operations with the golf course, was making close to three million dollars a year in revenue, contributing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to our debt payment. Many people out there are misled by the false narrative that Vander Lane and Casadis have been spewing out to the public. But the records indicate, you could go look at the financial information that, that is audited in previous years. Close to three million a year it was making and they shuttered it down. So, uh, s- selling the wastewater treatment plant is going, has already impacted many of us. It was a poor decision. Uh, they reacted, uh, claiming that, well, they had forty people at a meeting where they were issuing information. And, uh, they based their decision on that alone. There were, there was never any cost benefit analysis done. The public was never made aware, uh, but they should have known, but the, the supervisors never made it clear that, hey, when we sell this, you're going to have to pay additional monies because American Water has to make a profit. And their average return on invested capital is six percent. So you could expect at least, uh, besides all the regular rates going up, a six percent bump and maybe more. So, but not enough people were informed about it. They, they kind of slid it in there. And then all the lawsuits, four million dollars, over four million dollars for this stupid lawsuit concerning a liquor license, which could have been resolved within a week. I think they went out and looked for that. My, my theory is they wanted to kick Viva out because it was a long-term leasing and they wanted to sell the Running Country Club. We know they wanted to sell it. Uh, then there was another lawsuit, a federal lawsuit, which you probably are hearing about it for the first time because they don't want to advertise that. They don't want the public to know that we ended up in a federal lawsuit with supportive concepts because we were violating the rights of the handicapped. We were violating federal law. So I've just gotten the information for my right to know request. I still have to add up the costs that, 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 uh, required us. Mr. Casadis was a big part of that lawsuit as well. So if you're starting to see the trend here, you can see that we're not getting anything done. I mean, we had two months worth of minutes that they still haven't gotten right and they only just approved it in this February tenth meeting. So we're not, we're not even treading water. We're just going backwards and nothing is being accomplished. I'd like to know the list of new businesses that were brought into this community because you'll see in some of the video that I got Mr. Granger to tell us what he was here for. And what he told us was that he was hired to bring business into the community. Well, folks, contact me. Tell me what businesses he brought in here. And why don't we ask the supervisors to give us a list of Mr. Granger's accomplishments related to that? I mean, we gave him a fifteen percent bonus as he was walking out the door. And that's fifteen percent of a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So we know he got a nice little bonus check before we fired him. But what did he bring to this community? We lost the Bowlarama. We lost the movie theater. I don't see any businesses he brought here. He, he allowed a, a gas station to move from one part of four twenty-two, just down here, right into our center area, causing more traffic. So if you think that we're better off today than we were five years ago, think about what they've accomplished. I don't see it. And now we have millions of millions of dollars that I think they're going to just spend it like, like there's no tomorrow. Probably not. Former supervisor Vinny B. and Coney and Mr. Casadis and I think probably Spees is in that group too. They believe that this problem and I have some miracle where they're going to put the fire company up there, the police department, the ambulance, the, uh, the administrative people, uh, and then a community center on top of that. If they were to do that, this project would cost us over twenty million dollars. And then all the money's gone. And then we have another huge complex that the taxpayers will have to maintain. So these are things I'd like you to consider. You may not agree with me, uh, on all of them, but the information is there. Other than my opinion, the facts that I provided, I have documents to support it. But I encourage you to have an opinion, express it often, come to the meetings, make yourself knowledgeable about what's going on with these supervisors. And, uh, get involved with this community because we need involvement right now. It's important. So, uh, I'll say, uh, encourage you to watch the video and enjoy.
I'd like to follow up on the February tenth, twenty twenty meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We rise up for the legislative class. What do we wish to see the United States of America? To be proud of what we stand for, one nation, united, in this law, that we are just for all. We'll call Mr. Kirchner.
Yeah.
Mr. Gattner.
Here.
Mr. Casadis.
Here.
Mr. Stopp.
Here.
And I'm here. Um, a couple of comments before we get started. We're testing this out as a potential meeting site. So bear with us. There's some, there's some echoes. It's not that well prepared, but we're going to ask for your patience. We'll try to speak loudly. Let us know if you can't hear. We don't have microphones set up. Uh, but also please try to be respectful because if there's a lot of chatter in the room, it's going to be very hard for everyone to hear. Uh, so we're testing it out, so please be patient with us. Uh, I can announce that, you know, the township is testing out a new recording device. All right, it's over there, an iPad. And I believe the public, and some members of the public are also recording, so just so the public's aware that the meeting is being recorded. Okay, um. So public comments. I see there's a number of folks going here to talk about, uh, the short-term housing, transient housing. If you would be amenable, that we would like to maybe take those comments when we come to that agenda item rather than upfront. Because there's, you know, some information we might like to share, but we're taking a couple of comments. Is that okay with those folks? If we could just hold those comments? Okay, thank you. So, other, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Well, I have four others here I'd like to talk about. First one is about the prior minute corrections. They were not coming. Uh, in fact, the June, the January sixth minutes that were approved with corrections, well, I can't proofread them because they weren't made available on the agenda section. And so once, uh,
November, January, Victor, and Laura Hughes, Justin. They're there on the website now.
You proved them. The problem, I was throwing my words this morning.
Right.
Uh, the final is then with the June sixth, I mean, January sixth and the thirteenth, both minutes were not corrected when they were, uh, voted up into the agenda. We did a lot of, spent a lot of time talking about those at the way of speaking. It's a shame that we wasted all that time without making the correction. Uh, the other thing is in the minutes, uh, for the December twenty-seventh minutes that are going to be approved tonight, it says that, uh, the presentation by Jennifer Savage, that the chart is attached in the minutes. The chart is, uh, summary, whatever's put up there, is not attached because
I believe that's being corrected as well. That's also on the one side.
So that is the second thing I wanted to mention. Thirdly, I want to talk about one of my favorite subjects, Fox and Rothschild. And I just wanted to, to, uh, to point out that in November, we were charged with a hundred and four thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars in legal fees. In October, it was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. In September, it was a hundred and thirty-one dollars, a hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. For a three-month period, we incurred four hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and one dollars in legal fees. This is outrageous. If you divide it by two hundred and fifty per hour, which is usually what they get, there's probably a couple hundred dollar hour moments in there, so it's being very absurd. That's, uh, over one thousand, I'm going to see it, one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five hours.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. And then we'll talk about the destruction records. Uh, these things came out of the forensic audit for this country club. One was a, uh, a transfer fund policy, which I tried for months, and I had to do it, find it in. The other thing was that the missing records for the operator, for Jennifer Savage, when it involved the course, they found yours not missing. And what I'd like to know is, was a relevant investigation to find out who was responsible for this. Who's possession were they in and what happened to them? They're running out.
That's it.
You will report it.
Is that the three minutes? Yeah. Next, next thing.
Not aware of an investigation.
So I'm going to ask you, you know, on the destruction records, anything that's related to the golf course or the country club, we should retain those records until we investigate. We shouldn't be having an investigation into this. My major record's missing. It's like a whip. That's like a war going on, okay? So, uh,
Thank you, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes. I will make a, a comment, uh, as far as, yeah, we can't change the past if something's missing. But I will make a comment in part, you know, one thing on the agenda. Again, the, the information that was put together on here to try to, for the public, I mean, you'll notice that we were giving out notes before with the, with the agenda to kind of explain the items better. I think we did a very nice job of putting these together. Uh, the help of a couple of comments, you know, from other people, putting more information on the agenda so that you can understand it. Um, and you will notice under the records to be destroyed, you know, we have looked at those. These are some very old records that, uh, some of them were found. Uh, the ones to do with the country club, I will comment. These are daily sales receipts, cheeseburgers, whatever, that with the country club, these are daily sales receipts, cheeseburgers, whatever, that were sold during a time period that really have no use in this, and they value it. The retention policy, to get rid of the records at the right time rather than take up space illegally. Okay, move on. So, everyone else that is on here will get to the short-term records. That's all right. Did I miss anybody other than short-term records? All right, move on. Minutes, December twenty-third, we had an issue last time, I think we didn't have enough people participating. I did review the video of that, so if I can, vote on that now. We make a motion to approve December twenty-third, twenty-nineteen minutes.
I did, I did review them as well.
I take it so did you. So, we have the motion to approve. Seven. And a second. Any further discussion?
I, I do have a couple, couple of things on there. In the minutes, under the agenda management discussion, it said one point eight million, and I, I think it should be one point eight seven. It seems like a small improvement. If someone moves back to the minutes two years from now and wants to get the exact number. And then the only other thing was that, and I don't know if this matters, in the supervisory reports, Mr. Don spoke before Mr. Andy. I am questioning what's...
Oh, it's just a word.
E word.
That's what, non-legal.
So, I don't know if that matters, but I thought that one point eight seven.
Yeah, one point seven five. Go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, I'll amend it to that. Make the correction on one point eight seven five, add this people order. Approve subject to the two chains. Second. We have a second. Any further discussion?
Are you going to, I can see that they corrected one.
For December twenty-third?
Yeah. Are you going to correct the actual minutes themselves, or you're just gonna announce in the days and correct them? And then there's, we did think that December twenty-third...
Yeah, we're gonna take back the document and everything. Yeah, they haven't been posted yet. Yes, yes.
And, and then one other thing, we talked about how we need to bring this up every time, minutes about removing addresses. If the, if the slow going rate before, but we could remove the addresses.
Further same to go, and then you're gonna amend again? No, 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 this one's, I said, not, we're not, let's get them approved. Move on. You want to... Yeah. Yes.
There's a motion, there's, he said, what the changes that, that break on...
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'd say that. Minutes of the January thirteenth, twenty-twenty Board of Supervisors meeting. Make the motion to approve the January thirteenth, twenty-twenty minutes. I will second that. I can make a comment on that, you know, there were, we had quite a bit of discussion on this. We did not video record that meeting. It was hard to make some adjustments, because we couldn't go back, we, the secretary could not go back and verify some of those things, so as recorded, in essence, they are what they are. Great job, I believe. Any further discussion on those minutes, the January thirteenth, twenty-twenty? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
They got their way. They got their way.
Do you make a motion?
I make a motion.
And I second.
I second.
Minutes of the public hearing, January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty.
Make a motion to approve the public hearing, January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd say that. Minutes of the January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty.
And I will note that was updated, the previous is attached, so the updates, the... I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I just wanna call out, we're doing a one-handed job on the minutes. Dispersments. Your question, sir? Okay. Dispersments. I'll make the motion to approve the dispersments.
I'll second it.
Second. Any further discussion? Just some questions. Jen, are you here? Ben's here. Just, and again, this is my normal thing, I'm gonna be going through the checks and just get some explanation and clarification for the public, because if I ask some of the questions, I'm assuming that the people in the audience, audience are gonna ask them. So, Mr. Hughes had also asked about the Fox and Roundtable bill. The one thing I noticed was, under Township Manager, it was fifteen K for legal and then ten point seven for labor, just to clarify. That is not for the Township Manager negotiations, that is just, it came from...
The public will get a credit of not managing, so there's need or there's special compensation for labor.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, so that wasn't twenty-six thousand dollars of dealing with Mr. Granger. Can you explain the different fees for the engineering, what were paid from different companies?
You were asking about different companies.
Yeah, and...
So, Greg Alley is to start general, he's full engineer, they do missile engineering, planning commission, GIS services, code enforcement, and other road projects. Masana Bradley is the attorney in use for zoning hearing board matters. McMahon is our traffic engineer, there was a large increase in there that has to do with the program at the pedestrian street skate project, which we have federal and state grant funding, about two hundred million dollars to support that project.
Last two, Safety Net Sanctuary, I know that's for animal control, for three thousand, and then there was a large refund, sewer overpayment to Glenn, with Glenn LLC. Could you just explain those, please?
Glenn LLC is a company over in Antar Road, and the township just results from steps to Glenn House, they need over payments in the transfer ownership. They sent us a fifteen thousand dollar check, the building over seven thousand, so we have to...
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Anything else? We have a first and a second, I believe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I'd say that. Old business, monthly golf report.
Could I say that I'm the Reading Country Club? And I have sent it to the State Ethics Commission, and I did receive a reply that I won't hear in twenty-one days. And if I don't hear in twenty-one days, they're still, don't worry about it, they'll get to me when they get to the...
Thank you, Greg. And by the way, I'm, I'm great speed on this. I mean, I'm also announcing, I am a member of Reading Country Club as well. I've also sent a letter to the ethics board. I got the same reply, waiting thirty days. Yeah, so, I did not just join the Reading Country Club. I've been playing there since nineteen seventy-three. So, much for golf.
Mr. Chairman, the twenty-nineteen golf report has been posted to the board's workspace, as well as to the township website. I'm very excited to announce that we have four hundred and nineteen rounds of golf played in January. This is a significant increase over the years. There was only a hundred and twenty-eight in twenty-nineteen, and there was only seventy-one in twenty-eighteen. So, obviously, the unseasonably warm weather, which Mr. Clarence Ham can talk about, since he was on sixty-nine news tonight. So, the unseasonably warm weather has contributed to that. We did have a few small snow events, which resulted in just seven days, which was covered for snow. Otherwise, we've had a very successful January.
Thank you, yes, I did, we noted, compared to last year, our, the monthly January, revenue was up, our costs were down compared to last year. That's a good combination. So, last year, if you recall, first quarter, we were not tracking everything monthly, we only started in April, so I think it's a good start for the year. So, hopefully, we...
Yeah, great job, Brian and Derek.
It's a great, yeah, Derek and Brian.
And global, and global warming.
I have a question. With the golf membership income, how are we crediting that? Because I look at the report right now, and we don't have any. Maybe in our...
I, I can answer that question, or I could let Jen or Derek do, but I can quickly summarize it. So, our new system, the way it used to work, we used to have a system called golf, now as you know, whatever, money collected, put in a pool, got listed under a membership category. The way it's done in our new software is when you pay membership dues for the year, it's counted as a liability. So, it's a liability until the rounds are actually played, and then the money transfers onto the balance sheet during that time. So, as, you know, if you collect a hundred thousand dollars in membership, it does not appear in January, when someone plays a round of golf and it gets recorded that...
So, are we using any rounds as a standard itself?
It's, yeah, it's something around that. I don't know if it's a hundred or something for membership, a hundred or something, yeah. Just so it flows across and about, and even based throughout the year. I know that's like huge loaded, that just pops on in December. Are you tweaking that? Derek's, you know, working on tweaking that. I think Jen and Derek are working on tweaking that.
I also, I also want to make a comment. Unfortunately, one of those snow days, Derek had organized a golf, which would have even been better. I want to compliment him, this past Saturday, we had fifty-six dollars in thirty-six degree weather, which is something that you normally wouldn't see on a Saturday in February. So, he deserves a lot of credit for going above and beyond the cause. So, I just want to make sure.
And thank you, team, for, you know, the partners who proved Derek and Brian were setting the room up tonight. There was an event here on Saturday night, which I'll mention later, so it was set up for the then Saturday teardown, set up here for this meeting today, so appreciate, you know, all that effort, so we could try this as a meeting site. The, Jay, just, I mean, two things. One, if, if it's a system situation, I still would rather see, if you collect membership dues, the money should just be there, because it would save, I think it would be actually less of an accounting nightmare of crediting rounds on a total basis. My other concern would be is if you're collecting a three thousand dollar membership fee, as an example, is if they are unused rounds. I was a member one year, and I played four times, so it was about seven hundred bucks a round, so you got your money for nothing. So, in that situation, I guess my concern would be in December, is the accrued rounds that were not played, then credited as income. Okay, as, as long as that is done, it, it seems a little odd to me from an accounting standpoint, I understand, as long as it's consistent, and we make sure that it's credited, but... And what we can do is, what you might have seen in last year, we were listing the liability, not the liability, but just the collective amount, as in the, in the regard record, and I think we could do that, you know, sixty, seventy thousand dollars, say, here's what it is, it's not on the sheet, but it's sitting in the bag. As long as, as long as it's eventually credited, it just seems like it would be simpler the other way, but that's my, that's my brain. Thank you. I think it's nice to have the data in front of us every month, so we know what is going on. Thank you. Monthly write note request reporter.
Mr. Chairman, the twenty-nineteen write note request report has been posted again to board's workspace, as well as to the township website. So, the board's request would have been moved to the names of the person who submitted. Tally for the month of January twenty-nineteen, we had fourteen people who submitted requests. Pretty much those down there, we haven't seen any deviation from what we've been seeing once a month right now.
Can you just make sure that the board wanted, we have, we could list the name of the people?
Yeah, thanks, really. Yeah, it looks that you don't have names of the individuals on your board's total dollar amount, but it gives you a sense of, you know, what requests come in and what, what questions are being answered, so the public's aware. Set date and authorize advertisement for a town hall meeting to discuss the service electric television franchise agreement.
You know, this discussion was a lot fun last time, so it's not... So, this is what happens, we have conversations in public, we try to be very, very transparent, and sometimes they can be difficult conversations, which is a good example. We have to pick a date. So, the administration is hoping that the board can give us a motion on a date for the cable franchise agreement discussion. Again, this would be a town hall meeting that we would invite the public to, while including, we can actually also invite service electors. And we'd like to have people come in, so that they can understand better what this agreement is about. We're hoping for a date, so...
Ideally, we'd be willing to have a representative of service electors, representative of Comcast, the law, the negotiating, and...
Yeah, that's right.
And probably one of her own, Jeff Anderson, who was on the board before, that did a lot of research. So, I would, I know we gotta, gotta come up with a date to advertise this and authorize it. I would suggest, just my personal preference, like we're doing for the RCC meeting this week, if we do it on Wednesday following the next board meeting, just that it keeps for some people that are traveling, it keeps them one week free, and then you'll, that's my suggestion, I hope when there's availability.
February twenty-sixth. February twenty-sixth, that's the Wednesday after the next meeting.
So, you'll see that we actually have something already scheduled for February? No, no, it's different. Okay, so we're still good then? Okay. All right, so, yep, February twenty-sixth is a possibility, does that work for everyone?
I mean, it's free, listen, there are a lot of them going, so, as long as it's free for them.
Right, that should be good, but it's... I'll, I'll make a motion to advertise... To set it, authorize the advertisement for the town hall meeting to discuss the service of the Lloyd Drift Cable Vision franchise agreement on...
February twenty-sixth, seven P M.
Twenty-sixth at seven P M.
At the Reading. Every twenty-sixth, seven P M. to Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, February twenty...
There'll be at least three of us here, three, we do...
Seven P M.
Dave, you're good? So, Dave, Michelle, and Ray. Right here. Ready, how do you come to this?
So, just to clarify, we're talking about Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, seven P M., and at the Reading Country Club. Do you have a motion?
Second. I'm waiting on the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd say that. Adopt ordinance establishing short-term lodging regulations. Before public comments, I want to make a couple of comments. We had a lot of, a lot of public comment on this topic, and we want to do this right. You know, I think we had a ordinance out, yeah, we had a public hearing. We had a lot of feedback, and some of it, I think, is, is, was very good, ways to improve and strengthen this. We've also have seen that in some other communities that have adopted these ordinances, and seen them all yet, but there are ways to strengthen this, and it's able to be helped as well. So, we're gonna open this up to public comments, but I hope we, you need to make that for now, but I am gonna make a motion to probably table, to table this to at least the next meeting, so we could further review and look into some of the adjustments. And some of the things, you have to give it definition, and defining the length of time, and there were some very good suggestions made by, and some other, just raising strength in the ordinance. So, rather than approving it as it exists, I'd like to see some adjustments made, but I'd also like to hear your public comments. So, I think we'll take the public comments now. That being said, we didn't make the motion yet, or I did make the motion yet, but... So, would you like to, David? Janet?
We're done, eh? Dave and Janet Holzring, twelve nine one drive. First off, I just want to thank the board for choosing to have a meeting tonight in the country club. It's great for mine coming up to know what agenda we have in the township, so to look out great, and a nice change of pace. So, so we, along with twenty-eight other neighbors in half a hundred thousand, some officials, that supported the board creating an ordinance that would preclude the operation of transient... that supported the board creating an ordinance that would preclude the operation of transient lodging lodging. And in our case, specifically in single-family residential zones. And so that's our, obviously, our narrow interest. As we've stated before, we're certainly not against the idea of short-term transient lodging operating in other, what we believe to be more suitable zones in the township. And I think it is appropriate for the board to get it right. And to the degree that I had a chance to review the realtor memorandum that was sent in by the board of directors, I think there are some useful suggestions that they make, but I think they're missing an important point relative to the state Supreme Court ruling that I know Sam is definitely familiar with, back in April, that basically stated that transient lodging uses are not consistent with single-family usage in zone residential districts. And that non-family uses, such as fraternity houses, boarding houses, and short-term rentals, have been found to be antithetical to the residential character of the single-family residential zones. And so I think, number one, that ruling established precedent that allows the board to indeed enact an ordinance stating how our township will allow or not allow short-term lodging to go on the township, so that's number one. And therefore, you do have a right to prevent a homeowner from renting. And we believe that having short-term transient renters coming going in these specific single-family residential zones will negatively affect property value and will upset the community and family feeling of our residential streets. So I just want to thank the board for the thorough consideration that given this particular issue and the open debate that you've encouraged. It's our belief that it's time to act by voting yes to the ordinance. Perhaps adjusted with some useful recommendations in those areas that we are establishing its use. But we think it is time to put this to rest and bring this to a halt. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Brooks.
Keith Brooks, 47 years old. I will just make, one question I have for Castle. Are you the thought that this is not ready to go?
I was not, I will say, I was not consulted in making the decision. You know, I have the board's decision. First of all, I don't think the board's voted on whether they're going to take it or not. There were some suggestions that came in concerning from the realtors that I know I was asked in executive session, I was going to announce this later, to potentially take a look at. So I hadn't looked at it until today, I haven't had enough time to really study it. But I do think the ordinance that we wrote is consistent with the recent Supreme Court case. However, that doesn't mean it's perfect.
Well, Supreme Court, pretty smart what they did. Because it's hard to take something like this and put a rubber stamp on it and say, well, it's good theory, and good in Pittsburgh, and good in Philadelphia, it's good for the township. It's not. They say it is. Of course, they say a lot of things in here. And it's interesting to find out why the Burke, the Burke's Association of Realtors would put out an 11-page document about why you should do it. Perhaps it's about them. And that's a problem, it's not about us. It's all about them. They're not trying to say, well, they said, you didn't do anything. There's nothing that proves you did anything. Imagine that. After all the meetings that had been had, and going to the planning committee, going to Burke County twice, coming back to the planning committee, planning committee, back, handing it back to you. You said, well, it's time for a vote, and here we are at the end, and ask where we're not gonna vote. Why? Because we have 11-piece document that is written for them. Why? Could it be that the realtors want to be the ones to come into the community and rent? Airbnb? That's a possibility, because there is also a lot of information out there about professional... words. It's not you and me, nor is it my neighbor, it's them.
...Burgess County, and I'm also here speaking on behalf of more than seventy Exeter residents who are also members of our association. So, just to clarify, some of the concerns that our association had were just how the ordinance is currently written. Look at, you know, starting with the definitions on page two. The definition of a short-term lodging is the occupancy of any property for temporary rental by a transient visitor. What's the definition of a transient visitor? Anyone who rents a short-term lodging. You can kind of see how it's difficult to interpret and to enforce. And to speak to, I know you had mentioned a lot about the April, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court case and how, yes, that was, that applied specifically to properties where it was a property. A property, where it was converted into a twenty-four-seven, short-term rental in three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. And this ordinance tries to cover that, and I think that it should, and the association does agree that it definitely should. But what it does is it puts a cap of ninety days on how many days you can rent it. But it doesn't say what has to be done for those other, you know, two-hundred-some days a year. And so what we have seen that has worked better in other areas is rapidly requiring that you can't rent it for more than ninety days, require that it has to be an occupied property by a long-term resident for two-hundred-seventy or more. Or it's somewhat of a random number is what we've seen that works best. They get rid of those abuse cases where you just have, like, I think one resident described it, a twenty-four-seven hotel. The most important concern to us is how, you know, it would affect private property rights. And the right to rent your property is just as important as the right to live in it and the right to sell it. Those are the only three things you can really do with a property that's of end use. There's also privacy concerns. If you look back at a Commonwealth court case in Pottstown as recently as last month, Pottstown required rentals to undergo an annual inspection, and their ordinance was, they lost their appeal against some property owners who said that that was a violation of their property rights under the Pennsylvania Constitution. But I just want to also be clear that we aren't against any short-term rental ordinance. Licensing is a well-established practice, setting some standards, requiring smoke alarms, requiring people abide by certain standards of occupancy, of parking that applies to everybody, because I don't think it really matters if the cars across the street from you are, you know, owned by a short-term renter, they're owned by your neighbor across the street who just owns six cars around them, or has a large family and marches on the streets. And setting standards that applies to everyone will make sure that it's fair to both residents, visitors, and the people who do or do not operate an Airbnb, or any other kind of short-term rental. The last thing I'll add is for anyone who is kind of thinking in their head, no, I do want a zoning ban on, in suburban areas specifically, I'd just ask that you consider, you know, what that would do to someone who is relying on it. My, my parents who live actually coincidentally work towards Pottstown, they have a neighbor a couple of doors down who has an Airbnb, and, and I think it's now six months ago, his wife passed away. And luckily, you know, he has a home with a large yard that makes it easy for him to, you know, host his grandkids, have people over. Without the little bit of extra money that he takes in by renting his home out for a couple of weekends a year, that money goes a long way towards maintaining his home and towards paying his property taxes. I think that there's something that pretty much everyone in this room can agree that no one should be, you know, kicked out of their home if they've been living in it for so long because of a property tax increase or because they can't afford it on a fixed income. And this is a way that some people have been able to stay in their home. So I do encourage the board to table the ordinance tonight. We can get something, you know, help the board, work on amendments, so that way we can have something presented very soon, could be passed. My hope would be within, by this time next month, we could have an ordinance passed that takes into account all of the amendments.
Thank you.
There's going to be some stairs in the meeting. Just so the board members can see, you'd have to go.
Another public hearing.
Yeah.
So we have to review that. We just did not, we got information from various sources, as well as I mentioned other townships. We want to review that and see how extensive, if any changes are made. We haven't decided that yet. Just. Thank you. And I don't know if I mentioned this at the beginning of public comment, this also applies to public comment at the end of the meeting, but yeah, just please, in the interest of everyone's time, we try to just stay on the point and triddle them into three minutes, your discussion. Jamie Perez.
My name is Jamie Perez. I'm the 2020 Chair for the Association's Government Affairs Committee. I'm here to comment on the proposed short-term rental ordinance and ask the township to table the ordinance so that it can be amended. One of the issues that the township has attracting visitors is that would-be visitors to Exeter Township have limited options for conditional lodging facilities such as hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts of the sort. If you do an online search for each of these options, you will net zero results within the township. Many visitors look to small, short-term rental market to provide a place to stay while they visit amenities or do business in and around Exeter Township. These visitors bring benefits to the entire community, not just to the individuals they rent to, by going to other visitor-related amenities such as restaurants and any historical sites or tourist destinations within the township. Short-term visitors are more prone to spending money since they usually want to experience the local scene and cannot depend on the host to cook meals or entertain them. The next level of short-term rental instead of going to the horizon are the experiences that skilled hosts can create. Visitors depend on a good relationship with their host, who can point them to great local finds, interesting things to do and see in the community, and great food and shops that might be unique to the visitor and the area. We feel that, like most things, there's absolutely a learning curve. Maybe there have been a few problems with cases and noise and things like that up to this point, but the potential to the township to benefit from short-term rentals is obviously clear in our opinion. We as an association would like to work with the township to better understand the current problem and to help the process of creating parameters that help the township reach its goals, promote the area as a place to visit, and also be ready for the future. We are the rapidly changing housing climate, and it's important that the proper time given to thoroughly think through the ways this ordinance can be beneficial for all parties involved. We, your local Realtors, want to help you so that your property values continue to grow and homeownership remains a practice in Exeter Township.
Thank you.
I agree with regulation, just not restrictions, and I would like to see this shelved at least the next meeting, so we can have time to, you know, review all possibilities. One of the points, like, about seven or eight points here, in the ordinance, rental rental is defined as an arrangement whereby one or more persons obtain permission to occupy a property or portion thereof for a specific period of time. I think that's extremely vague and would bring in long-term rentals in under that ordinance as well. Six months, a year. I'm a vet, and I have friends that are vets or that are still in the service, and they need a place for a year, that's it. According to this ordinance, that's a specific period of time, and that would be considered a short-term rental. And my house is in a suburban area, and that would be not allowed. So I would be discriminating against vets, discriminating against other people that need it for a specific period of time, simply because they mentioned that I'm going to be here for this time for it. So I think we really need to define what that is. Is it the state's definition? Is it fourteen days, thirty days? You know, I think it needs to be a [inaudible]. See, the requirement to see customer lists via the ACA Constitution, as individuals have right to informational privacy, thanks to the PSCA versus Commonwealth in 2016. I think we need time to comply with the ordinance. So I don't think when it goes into effect, that it should be just sweeping and everybody's done with their short-term rentals in the suburban areas. There are people that have contracts, have agreements, and there needs to be some time, not only to satisfy those people, so they're not stuck in, you know, stuck in the middle of this all. They're coming here for Park Jazz Fest, for hiking, for colleges, for sports, you know, all sorts of things in the area, but also to be able to get the signage, to get bearings installed, bring things up to, to code for the ordinance. Sorry, I got locked out here. Currently, the township already covers ordinances for, you know, noise and parking and things like that. Unfortunately, and it's terrible, I've had crappy neighbors, I'm sure I've been accused of being a crappy neighbor once or twice for being too loud, but, you know, that's not a reason to prohibit somebody's right to use their house as they see fit. So, you know, it could be a crappy neighbor that owns the house and this ordinance wouldn't do anything. But if they happen to have a short-term rental in there, now everything's, you know, up in the air. Let's see, the Supreme Court ruling, I read the same Supreme Court ruling that they can be, can pass ordinances, but it doesn't mean that you have to. I agree, there should be something, there should be regulation, we should be making sure it's safe, that the residents are safe, that the renters are safe, but not so that we restrict it. At the last meeting I brought up, there were four hundred and eighty-one reviews of just Airbnb. There's, you know, several of these places. From our, I literally went through and counted one by one and made sure I had it written down in the zoning map. That four hundred and eighty-one was an average rental of eighty dollars an evening. Compound that with a hundred dollars, let's say for a family of four eating out conservatively, a hundred and eighty dollars a night, just about four hundred and eighty-one rentals, not multiple stays, multiple evenings, or the people that didn't even leave reviews. That's eighty-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars of revenue coming into Exeter Township. I don't think that's something we should ignore. On the list, when I put the zoning list over Airbnb, the zoning map over the Airbnb map, and that's just Airbnb again, half of those were in suburban areas. So we would cut that eighty-six thousand dollars in half, just by some, you know, first-round answer to the reviews. Jamie's point, we didn't have any bed and breakfasts or hotels in the area. There's probably a lot of local destinations, like the country club, golfing. We had our wedding shower here, we have lots of people into the area. I mean, I grew up around here, we've used this area a lot, and there's no, no bed and breakfast, no hotels, unless you want to go within the city or far outside of the area, and then that's where people are going to eat. So it's going to further decrease that, you know, the revenue coming in. And the last point I'll make is sixty percent of short-term rentals are millennials. I'm almost forty, and I'm this close to being considered a millennial. So it's not eighteen, nineteen-year-old kids that are coming in and they're going to trap the place, you know, they're thirty-year-olds, they have families. Sixty percent of the renters are millennials. If we don't keep up with what's going on around us, we're going to get left behind. Hoover lived the short-term rentals, this is the direction it's going, and we have time for you to give us. We have to, or else we're going to be, you know, these other cities that nobody comes to visit anymore. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's from Tina and Mark Ripson.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, sorry I have to injure my accent, as you can hear, I'm not originally from very fancy, but I have been living in Exeter for like ten years, something happens here too. And I remember the Airbnb, modest income, but, you know, it's something that my husband and I, I was kind of sick with my husband talking about the size of our house, the cost of our house, we should be downsizing, and what happened to these two rooms, and half the face of reviews. So I said to him, you know, stop talking about it and do something about it. If you think we're, you know, struggling to pay our taxes and all that stuff, then maybe you can look into Airbnb. He said yes, because he thought nobody would come to this area. Well, he was wrong. We've been doing Airbnb now for eighteen months, and it is out of our house, and the majority, I would say ninety-five percent of everything in this area is in an existing household. So nobody's going to invite somebody into their house, so it's going to be detrimental to them or anybody in the community. So I believe there are many misconceptions about what short-term renting through agencies like Airbnb and [inaudible]. We've been talking this evening about Airbnb, and that's particularly what I favor because of the regulation, but they're essentially all the same. So who are the renters and why do they find themselves in this area, despite the fact that my husband thought they wanted to come? Well, many renters have original alien connections in this area, and our visiting families, for example, Mary and her family, who live in California now, and have been for the last twenty years, stayed with us for ten days when they moved her mother into a nursing home and cleaned out her casa after its sale. Karen, her husband from Pittsburgh, stayed with us for a week while their grandsons got married. Allison George came from Texas for a week to settle their freshman into Albright College. Harry and Louise, who came from Princeton originally, but now live in Dubai, the United Arab Emirates, came to stay for two weeks while they visited their son who's studying in [inaudible]. Mary Belle and Arthur, who live in Ohio, came to stay for five days to base their sons in this area, to visit Philadelphia and Washington. They spent most of their time and money in the English country because they went home with a load of chairs on the back of their truck. Others are working in short-term in this area, as our vet mentioned. Others of them are, have been on a thirteen-week contract with engineers, doctors, pharmacists, physical therapists, traveling nurses, dentists, nurse practitioners. We've also had student doctors on a six-week rotation at Rayleigh Hospital in St. Joe, as well as long-term substitutes at local schools and student teachers. I rented from my home where my husband, myself, and our thirteen-year-old daughter live. I would certainly not bring anyone into my home who had not been vetted by a third party. When we speak to renters to make a connection, they have passed verification on the site at the starting point. Their identity has been vetted by the agencies, their driver's license has been verified, and all of their personal details. Their payment method is also checked and verified. This process is essential for both owner and renter to ensure safeguard. Everyone must leave a review and receive a review. People are very frank and specific. They speak to safety, friendliness, cleanliness, as well as many other factors. So compared to any of these regulations, we'll call the owner or the renter, and the renter, time to be banned from the site. Rental property inspections are in the works as well as twenty-four hour neighborhood and community guidelines. I really do not see why [inaudible] would regulate to take on inspecting properties individually, which are already going to be inspected by rental agencies. And somehow that would also create a financial complication, a question of what qualifications would these people have as well. And we already have a product high tax burden, I would hate to see that, afraid of the rest of the public. So limit rental duration or ban rentals altogether would be very controversial. What we all want is long-term stable professions who spend money in this area, join the gyms, eat at local bakery, spend money on gas and entertainment, which benefits the community and local businesses. Go to concerts at the Center near Arena and visit other local sporting teams. The least amount of rental costs is most preferable for everyone concerned, so a limitation would affect this. Exeter Township benefits direct [inaudible] lodging taxes, which is regulated by Airbnb. If you abandon these agencies, the entire procedure enters a territorial [inaudible]. Some people will get around the regulations. Unregulation prevents rental [inaudible]. Nobody wants to see that happen. Handed rented and applied companies like Airbnb are more protected than those rented to a single or family. If you only own cats, someone tells you how many cars you can drive, where you park them on the street. In my native area, there are several very large families.
Tina, could I just interrupt for a second? I mean, running, if you could make, I think you've made your point, that you're very pro of short-term rental, but if you could wrap it up in the interest of time, I think we're way over the title.
I love. People who live in the area, I can tell my neighbor who has aged children and all of his spouses, the children's spouses come to stay there, that he can have his heart all the way down the road, but by not allowing me to have one or two professionals in my home, and I've only ever had one at the time, apart from couples that come to visit relatives, I think that, you know, that is essentially ungrateful. I work in the [inaudible] district, and I find it very sad that my young colleagues who are looking to buy houses will not consider [inaudible]. They say it's just ridiculous how much the taxes are here, and we have. We have had situations where people have had to undervalue their property in order to sell the [inaudible]. So if we continue to see other things happen in this area, what basically is going to happen is we are pushing. We have nothing to share with the [inaudible]. If we offer something that is regulated and friendly, these are enough of people, they are not sororities, and they are not.
Thanks, I love taking that. Thank you.
Well, I think the [inaudible] of us are us.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
Dave, one, just for transparency, I've been a twenty-year member or affiliate to the Brooks Association of Realtors through my mortgage company, so just sharing that. There's been more than the Realtor group that's reached out. What I want to make sure is that we have something in place that's enforceable and it's not going to be challenged in court. That's, that's the key to me, and then also too, that addressing the grandfathering. Say, I know typically when you have any type of change, that there's a grandfathering in place anyhow, so I'm not quite sure how that would be, and I know there's some verbiage that we need to clear up. So I am in favor of some type of control, I just want to make sure that what we put in place is enforceable and it's not going to end up costing us a bunch of money.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to say, I want to do this early, not quick. It's more important to me that we do what's best, not easiest, and the best thing to do is get the ordinance right. It probably would be easier for us to vote on it and be done with it, but I think it's more important that we get the best ordinance possible.
And just as information, in Exeter Township last month, and I know, John, you have these numbers, but sales price to list price was ninety-nine point nine percent. That's pretty impressive. So, so when we say that people aren't buying, or aren't moving, or don't want to be here, that is not a correct statement, because again, these are numbers provided from the Realtor board stating that this is the number of houses on the market, and this is what it's selling for. So again, just sharing information with you.
Yeah, as I said, I'd like to see it done correctly. I don't want to go through it again. We're not going to get it perfect, but at least, you know, I want to get it as, as good as we can. So I'd like to make a motion to table this, so we can do some further research and decide if our [inaudible]. Any further comments? All those in favor? opposed? I say it. New business, author of advertisement for the February twenty-fourth Board of Supervisors meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the administration is seeking authorization to advertise for the next meeting, it's going to be February twenty-fourth. If the board is agreeable, we are recommending again that we do that here at the Reading Country Club.
Make a motion to authorize advertisement for the February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty Board of Supervisors meeting at seven PM at the Reading Country Club.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say it. Authorize advertisement for a request for proposals, RFPs for township engineer.
Mr. Chairman, the administration is seeking requests to go ahead and do the advertisement for the draft request for proposals for the township engineer. This has been circulated to the board.
Move that we authorize advertisement request for proposals for the township engineer?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say it. Authorize advertisement for RFP, request for proposal for township solicitors.
In a similar format, we are asking also for the authorization to advertise for a request for proposal for the township solicitor.
If you could please keep down the side conversations, if you want to, it's hard to hear up here, if you guys want to go in and help join the group, you can do that. Move that we authorize advertisement request for proposal for township solicitor?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'll be going in on this. I think [inaudible] has done a great job, they saved a hundred million dollars. You look at [inaudible] the amount of years there, I have that documented, I'll share it with you this week, so I'll be going in.
Any further discussion? Again, I would make the comment, I'd like to see data, so I'm [inaudible] to go with that. So we have a question. We have a second. Any further discussion beyond that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Appointment to the Township Board of Auditors.
Mr. Chairman, there is a vacancy on the Board of Auditors. I'm not ready. Mary [inaudible] that I'm actually, or, because you're the vice-chair now, Mr. DuBarkley? Is that correct? Second chair, so Mr. DuBarkley is here for Board of Auditors, so given the vacancies, there would be an appointment.
I'd like to nominate Phil Harsh for the Board of Auditors. I'd like to nominate Phil Harsh back in here for the Board of Auditors.
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say it.
Thank you, Mr. Harsh.
Thank you.
Mr. Harsh, I was going to say, Mr. Harsh, will you introduce yourself to Mr. DuBarkley before you leave, just so he's familiar with you? Thank you.
Plus, we need to [inaudible].
Okay.
Sure. I can't [inaudible]. Um, [inaudible] was a highway, it's a highway, it's eleven dollars, I just wanted to explain what that, is that the property of the, of the property? It's right here, it says highway [inaudible]. I was just wondering, [inaudible].
Jets, I'll be answering questions. Leagues for the highway [inaudible] over here in [inaudible]. We just show it to [inaudible]. Thank you.
Adopt resolution to authorize destruction of township records.
Okay, again, this was mentioned earlier, we have a list that has been included in totality into the actual agenda. This is a list of items that are to thwart destruction, name a record line of immediate retention and disposition schedule of records that comes for municipalities in [inaudible]. We are asking for the board's authorization to authorize destruction of records.
Make a motion to approve resolution to destroy the records. Better listed.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Prove reservation for a resolution to a waiver of subdivision of land development ordinance [inaudible]. This is [inaudible]. Do allow a time extension.
So this one, as well as the following item, which is number seven, go ahead and blow, I'm going to ask [inaudible] to give us some background information on that.
So Martin's appliance that is looking to relocate, they submitted a land development plan several months ago to locate at the Scott Ryder facility. Our subdivision land development ordinance only allows for a hundred and eighty days with time extensions. So that, number six, that's the first, they are seeking a waiver from that requirement. So that's the first part of this, and then the second part is that they are asking for a [inaudible]. They already received one time extension, I believe.
That is correct, so this is a two-part [inaudible] to ask for the waiver, and the second is to actually have the extension.
The move that we approve the resolution.
You're the only comment, is [inaudible].
You're the only comment is, is I would recommend a time extension. The applicant did submit plans to the planning commission, they were reviewed. At the time, there was not an agreement of sale. This is the reason for the delay, but when the plans were submitted back in July of two thousand nineteen, um, they're waiting for the sale to go through, so they needed extra time so they could proceed with the revision of the land development plans. But we did meet with them, staff met with them and they also were in front of the planning commission. And the planning commission was in favor of the project, it's a local business, they want to expand their, uh, area and so forth and location is much more desirable than where their current location is located.
And they will not be able, they won't be exited from Scott Ryder?
We're not sure. We made a recommendation, however, they were having some differences of opinion between the landowner and then trying to get access to that property, but at the time, they, they did not have access, but we're hoping that maybe they were able to renegotiate. Um, we strongly suggested that they have internal access, it'd be much more better for their business, um, just from, from the program avenue. So we're, we've been working with them, I noticed that, and working with the applicant as well to try to achieve, achieve that access.
Thank you, gentlemen. So, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the waiver of the Saldau ordinance.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I say no. Timing, the time extension?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the time extension for forty-one seventy-five, thirteen Avenue Avenue, until August twelve, twenty-twenty.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I think that beat you too.
I'm second. Yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I say no. Approval of holding tank agreement for fifty-nine thirty, forty-four, forty-five.
So township, uh, Sue is forced in office, her S E O, uh, has been working with the property owner over on board, Town Pike, it's an older residence, um, they have a set pool that's failing, um, obviously home loss systems are, are expensive, um, so the S E O recommended that to, until funds are available, that the residents, um, have a holding tank installed. Uh, it's been past practice that every holding tank has a holding tank free. A big holding tank? I'm not sure. Should be like a thousand, five thousand.
I'll make a motion to approve the holding tank agreement for fifty-nine thirty, forty-four.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I say no. Request to bid for the twenty-twenty highway seal coating contract.
Yes, uh, we'd like to have this put out for the, um, seal coating contract, that would cover four roads in, um, the township. It would be a way of road, Martin Road and Moyer Road and Zdowski Drive. This is a double seal coat, um, this would take place during the summer. The school is out. Mrs. Lippert fuels, this is the law.
You said this is, was it there, four roadways in the township?
Yes. It would, it would, it would go from, um, Lincoln Road goes from Moyer down to Lackey. Moyer Road is all a Moyer road, only turn by up the wayman. Zdowski to all of Zdowski, which is, yeah, then all the same, drop back out. Hartman runs, uh, fifty-four, goes away with down to, I think it's six hundred blocks of mailbox, that's where we stop. So, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
So again, this is a two-part, right? It's all the, it's for the advertising.
I'll make a motion to request a bid, highway twenty-twenty seal coating contract, four roadways.
Second. Any further discussion?
Couldn't hear the motion, could you say it again, please?
Would you repeat that?
Speak up.
Motion is to request a bid for highway twenty-twenty seal coating contract for the four roadways that Clarence mentioned.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I say no. And request to advertise.
I'll make a motion to request to advertise highway twenty-twenty.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I say no. Request purchase of a twenty-twenty Ford police interceptor utility vehicle for the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred dollars.
So there was a small modification to the amount, it is actually after the insurance payment, it is three D, D two oh four, if I was corrected on the printout of the agendas for today. So this was a sergeant's vehicle that we had within our police department that unfortunately was in an auto accident in December of twenty nineteen. Uh, we are very fortunate that the officer is okay, uh, the vehicle not so much. Um, this is an unbudgeted item for twenty-twenty. The cost for the twenty-twenty Ford interceptor in its totality is actually about fourteen nine thousand, almost fifty thousand dollars, so it's insurance claim that we received, so this is the offset of the amount. And Marty, I'm already clearing, this is all within the, uh, regulations, you have set course for more police vehicles?
Yes.
So that also all badging, everything?
What were you reading the total of the vehicle? Two thousand thirteen? Thirteen. I'll make a motion to, uh, purchase the twenty-twenty Ford police interceptor utility vehicle for the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and four dollars.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Where would the funds come from?
Jen, what does that, does that come out of the equipment fund? That would come out of...
And, and as far as chief, maybe, maybe, no, is there scheduled replacement for these vehicles or you just run them till the, the wheels come off?
Right now, we're running to the wheels come off.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Right now, we have a nineteen ninety-six car.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I say no. Set date and advertise communications committee workshop for Wednesday, February nineteen at six P M. at lower level of the Dunn Community Center.
Uh, yeah, our leadership team toward the communications committee, Michelle Hirsch and Michelle Gilbert and Laura Getz met, um, and discussed how we're going to proceed with this. And the first thing we want to do is have basically an open house brainstorming session for people to come and share their ideas of how we can improve communications in the township. Basically, the format is going to be pretty simple, it's going to be two, uh, two questions we're going to offer to people to answer. We'll also put the questions on the website for people who can't attend to share their responses. Um, our goal is to take this information back and start formulating a plan, which we'll be able to then bring back to the public for review before we finalize it to bring to the Board of Supervisors. Just one, one note, another thing that we discussed, the agenda tonight is a form of tax and communication, and we spent some time that day working on the agenda, trying to make it more, um, freer, friendly, so that you have more information going into the meeting, so that you know what's being discussed. So we'll certainly welcome feedback from that as well.
Very good, we need, you know, we need to...
So we need an authorization to set date and advertise, so get a motion for that.
The draw of the motion is set and advertise communications workshop for nineteen February nineteen at six P M. in the lower level of the Dunn Community Center.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I say no.
Could I mention one other thing? One, one other thing, we want, we chose, one reason we chose the Dunn Center, the lower level, is the furniture will work nicely for what we had planned, but it was also an opportunity to highlight another facility in the township.
Very good.
Hi ladies, couple of works, we've got four, five. Okay, um, last two weeks, we've been very well, this weather, as Sean mentioned earlier, we've been very fortunate with this weather and, uh, you know, snow projects. So we've been able to do, get a lot of other things done, we have a lot of tree trimming that we've been getting done, um, there's no way we could do it if there's snow bags along the road, then you just can't do it, it's too dangerous. Um, they've been working on a lot of catch basins, we have a lot of catch basins that have over the years, they're starting to sink. If you, if you notice, some of these catch basins look like they're dropping, it's because the developers, when they put them in, they use bricks to get them up, get the height up to where they want. Trouble is, once you start getting freeze thaw, the freeze thaw shoves the bricks out and the catch basin goes down. So now we're just, we're taking, we have to take the lid off, cement it to, to get it to the height that you want it and then put the lid back on. So it's a very time-consuming and, um, project, but it's, something has to be done, so, uh, they've been spending an awful lot of time on that and they're going to be, we have quite a few years to do. As long as this weather keeps holding, and today, they were, they were out in rain all day and working on it, so. Uh, we have, we have a lawn mow machine out, because of this, again, because there's no snow bags, you can drive along and trim along the, the roads. Uh, as far as, uh, doing the sign work, uh, there's a lot of stuff we can do, we have, we have salt, I made, but we're not using it at that point. Um, we also helped, uh, Jackson Wall School out, they asked us if they, we could do something. They have a parking issue, cars are parking along Church Lane, right where, uh, the buses have to come out, and they park, when the cars also line up, then to go around the loop. I'm not, I'm sure a lot of you aren't familiar with that, but anyway, it puts the cars right in the way of the buses. So we put up some, uh, no parking signs and, uh, okay, we might handle that, and that seems to be working at this point. If, if it needs more, then they're going to come back and ask the board if, um, we can give them, making arrangements right now, they don't want to go that far.
So far, it's working, and if, I guess, if, if they're satisfied with it, then they will do it, so.
Um, let's see, uh, that, that's pretty much it. Uh, we also have two vehicles that we're going to be receiving in the, in the near future here. It's a five fifty dump truck, at a cost of eighty-seven thousand seven hundred sixty-seven. This is through the nine oh two grant. Uh, seventy-five percent of that comes from grant money, motion sent. Seventy-five percent of the chassis and the dump lot comes from that. The plow and the spreader, we have to pay for, you can't, not to, to purchase that. Uh, so, but still a very good, uh, a very good deal. Also, we'll be receiving in the next month or so, a K nine police vehicle, and that's, um, it's, I saw, fifty-five thousand five eighty-five, and these were approved back in March eleventh of last, last year.
Those are the special ones, it's for the dog in the back, so the dog is working.
Yeah. That's it. Thank you, Clarence.
Chief?
I don't have much, uh, just to remind the residents that the, uh, township will be utilizing a new emergency notification system. This will be replacing code red, um, it's called SWIFT reach. So if you get on the township's website, there's a link there for SWIFT reach that will allow you to sign up for SWIFT reach, um, so make sure, even though you may have already signed up under code red, you'll now have to swa, uh, sign up under SWIFT reach. So make sure you go to the township's website, hit the link there and the directions there that can walk you through, uh, how to sign up. Um, in addition, um, I'd like to note that, uh, I know I've mentioned it before about a, uh, grandparents scam, but we continue to have victims, uh, here in the township. Um, if someone calls you, um, representing, uh, law enforcement or bail bondsman, requests that you wire money for a loved one, usually a grandchild that's been locked up, um, I would only ask that you take a call, get that person's name and information, contact the police department so we can verify that information is correct. Um, residents, uh, have sent money and, uh, have just scammed out of money that way, so please make sure you verify with, uh, us first if you have any questions, uh, if you receive a, a call like that, it could possibly be a scam.
Thank you. Engineer report?
Uh, work is progressing on East Never Sing, the Norfolk Southern, weather conditions a little bit better, get the snow down on the subways of the roadway, uh, do not have a deadline when they're going to be complete, but hopefully by the time April comes around and the plants are open up, this is where the final layering course and base course, so things are proceeding slowly, but they're moving along.
And if they had it in writing, they didn't, they won't, they won't consider opening anything for paving?
No, my, my rec, my opinion would be that I will open it, so probably may, when everything's stabilized, when they get overgrading and a paving done and so forth, um, if it's going to be sooner, I'll let everyone know, but that's probably where, realistically, that's probably where they're going to be at. That's all I have, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Managers report?
Such a report.
Owners missed it out, officers. Managers report?
Just that there was an executive session before this meeting to discuss personnel dispute with St. Lawrence and potential litigation matter concerning the area review, and that's all.
Managers report? Thanks, Alan.
So if anybody is interested, needs any assistance with the transition from the code red program, Lori and I have offered to, to an hour before the Dunn Community Center Community Communications Meeting, um, so that we can be there available, we'll have laptops available, if anybody needs to stop by and have any assistance, we'd be happy to help you with that. Um, you'll also be, um, getting mailers in from the U S Census, they'll be coming from, uh, the U S Census Department, starting in March. Those do ask for you to do your census online, this is the first time in U S history that we have the option to do that online. If you are not able to use the internet and get some assistance, don't have access, please do stop by the township building, we're happy to help with that process as well. You will need to bring your mailer with you, because it has a special code in it, so that we can assist you with that. Um, we're happy to help with that. Um, I also want to give a shout out and thank you to our administrative staff who have been working very hard on working on some of our outstanding sewer balances, so they've been doing some great work, so appreciate that. So, uh, I wanted to just let the public know that the administration was notified by the fireworks enthusiast group that they are no longer intending to submit a request for a special permit to do the Never Sing Day Club event on March seventh. Again, we have not received a permit and they do not at this point intend to submit for one, so, just in case anybody wanted an update on that.
I hope, I hope that this is time that some of the other speakers have gotten, but first I want to make a comment about, uh, legal behavior and ethical behavior. They are not wanting to say, because ethical behaviors or ethical actions are almost always legal, but legal actions are not always ethical. So I'd like everyone to keep that in mind and think about what I just said, because I believe that when we pass minutes, approve minutes that are not accurate, that is certainly legal, but you should ask yourself, gentlemen... minutes that are not accurate, that is certainly legal, but you should ask yourself, gentlemen, if it is ethical, I do not believe it is. We have three of our new supervisors who have told us that they want transparency, I spent the time in the past, in the minutes, to point out where there's a major discrepancy in what, what they're supporting in the minutes, it did not make sense, and it continued to ignore it. Another example of ethical behavior is a clarifying letter that was posted on the website, it doesn't indicate, it's, it's, it's like vague about who's investigating us, when it was very clear in the video, the solicitor said it was the district attorney's office that was beginning investigation on allegations of criminal conduct. Those section things, like, we buy an SUV for our, our manager, a hybrid SUV, we have the highest paid employees in Burke County, a second-class township, these things are all legal, of course, you can, you can away with it, but you're spending taxpayer money, and you should think about ethical conduct when you make these kind of decisions, it's not fair that every single taxpayer in this room are in this township, and it's very obvious if people take the time to look at what you're doing. So I hope that you will, especially the three new supervisors, take what I'm saying to heart, because I believe that we are still running this township very poorly, we have a very unethical person aboard, I'm not going to mention the name, but I think everyone knows who it is, and it looks like that person is still running the township, so I'm hoping that I see things change, I'm not, I'm not real excited about it, and no one misses a budget for a whole month, your finance director, the head of kids, is a three point eight million dollar surplus, then when I do a write to know request, all of a sudden, the documents, it says it's three point two million, okay, they're both wrong, and I'd, I'd bother to sit down with each one of the supervisors, go over the budget, and show you why there is a deficit, no one's taken me up on that yet, so legally, I guess you can ignore me, there are some things in second class township code that speak about presenting an inaccurate budget, advertising it, okay, you should look at that section, and, and, I hear you tapping, I hear you tapping there, but you know, I've given some people, gave one person six minutes to stand up here and talk.
That's agenda, I, that was my, my, that I gave some people leniency, they were first time speakers. That was agenda, I don't know, that was really right to educate the rules, so.
They agree, they're the first time speaker.
And you had an.
First time in this room.
And cumulative for the front and back end of the next year.
But I do want, I'll, I'll say one more thing, okay, I, I want you to understand that in section six oh seven of your duties, the very first duty, you're charged to ensure sound fiscal management, so I put to you, is it sound fiscal management to pay millions of dollars to a law firm, I mean, why aren't we in such much, so much litigation?
Dave.
Our, our paying our employees, like the best paid employee in Burke County, and this guy here, he doesn't have to do that, he's annoying.
Sit down.
Put those in the way.
Sit down.
Now, put them in the way.
Next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Thank, thank you.
Next speaker. Derek, anything further, because we talked earlier, supposed to turn around, okay. Good, that, supervisor, you're.
Couple things for the Reading Country Club, we will, similar to what Greg is doing, we will be scheduling a meeting for the, for the public, I'm going to meet with Derek and Ryan first, just to kind of get a wish list of what they're looking to talk about, and then invite everyone, so hopefully, at our next meeting, we'll be able to have a date, and hopefully, we'll be able to, to have this facility. Regarding meeting space, I did speak once again to the Exeter County School District, and it was told that it's simply using a form, that for some reason, this facility does not work, or another place does not, we are more than welcome to utilize their space at no cost, the only cost that we would have is if they do not have custodial staff scheduled at that one time, so it looks like we do have some options, if we do maintain this, which I think it's great, I do recommend that we get some type of a system where you can make sure that you hear all this, I think you can hear me, but maybe a few of you can't, and that's it, thank you.
Just two, just two things, the air can be was an important issue, so I think it was important to be a little longer than three minutes, than some other people who might be less important in terms of what they're talking about, which is usually nonsense, and the second thing is, I want to thank Derek and Mr. Arons for the, we were here Saturday for Mr. Jordan, Chief Jordan's farewell, in this very room, Dave and I presented Chief an award, Senator Shike was there, Representative LaLonde was there, it was a really nice event, so, great feedback there from everybody that was there, the hundred and fifty of us, and Chief Jordan appreciates the fact that we kept a surprise from him, he walked in shocked, so kudos to you and everybody that kept it quiet, and I'm really happy that he went out on a great note.
Thank you. Greg?
Sure. We'll get in. I want to thank everyone who came to the Reading Country Club tonight for this meeting, I think it was a very nice meeting, I got to see everybody spread out, so enjoy it here, and I hope everyone comes down to the barn for our next meeting, I think we'll get a lot accomplished, and I'd like to hear everyone's ideas, as well as our show Greg, and that's all, I hope you have a good evening.
I just wanted to bring up, I saw a lot of the disbursements, we had another sixty-eight thousand dollar clutch bill with JMH litigation, so I'm, I'm hoping, we probably have a small one in December, and then we're wrapped up, hopefully.
It's definitely not going to be January.
Not in January.
December, JMH.
So, it is what it is, but I, I think, I've heard in other meetings, people want in accounting of this, and how much it costs the township, not just the legal fees, not just the settlements, but the lost rent, the lost property taxes, so I, I'm just bringing that up, I don't, I don't know the best way to go about that, but I think we owe the public imagination, because you go online, you see a lot of different numbers, and we really hope the people that ask for it, we should give them what was lost and plus. So I don't know, I'll be glad to sit down with people, share what we can talk about a little bit, but that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Couple of comments from ladies, they've made great work on the sewer project, there's progress there, we have, we said that we had two million out of hands, we were chipping away.
One week, they collected over forty-five thousand dollars. Very impressive.
You can do that every week, it'd be a good show.
Certainly, I want to thank, you know, Karine, Derek, you know, Clarence's crew who were here today, I mean, the party was very successful for Chief Jordan, I think forty-seven years of the service.
Forty-seven years of service.
And very impressive.
Well, I can tell you.
It was a great turnout, you have Judy Shikes who's here, many representatives gave Mr. Jordan awards Saturday night, I think it was great, the setup was nice, everyone enjoyed, enjoyed the venue, so thank you for the entire, for setting this place up and then tearing that down and setting up for this meeting tonight, so we're going to have the meeting here, as we said, on Wednesday night, to talk about the future of this place, and I think it's a great place to have, it's full of plenty of space in here, we think we'll have plenty of space in here, we can have, I think, two hundred and fifty people, and if we have more than that, I think I owe Mr. Powell a dollar for that, so hopefully, we keep it on our two hundred and fifty people. Yeah, I think that's all I have.
I commend you, Dave, for keeping the meeting on track.
Thank you. Great job. Getting there, yeah, and I, I do agree, I mean, and when we have a specific agenda, a topic, you know, that is quite controversial, you know, we did do a lot, but I think it's very important to hear from everyone, so make sure we do get the right thing passed and something that we can afford, up and force, very similar, we'll get all of the noise coordinates, these are challenging topics, but you can't, you can't ignore them, we have to address them, so thank you, thank you everyone for coming.
Thank you.
Make a note, Jer.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vice out.